Let me begin with prayer and then I'll give you a little brief overview and then I'll turn the meeting over to Andy Fugit. Please join me in prayer. "God Almighty, may your name and the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior be magnified and glorified through this meeting. I ask that you send the Holy Spirit to fill every corner of this room and that all we do and all we say is for your glory. I thank you, Lord. We love you and give you praise and honor in Jesus' name. Amen." Just a couple of sort of housekeeping things. As you know, the Presbyterian has called the meeting for our vote on gracious dismissal on Sunday, January 27th. The registration for it will begin in the Great Hall about 4:00. You will need to sign in during that time. You don't have to be here at 4:00, but the meeting starts at 5:00. During the meeting, the ballots will be passed out and the vote will be taken. We will provide some time while the votes are being counted, some time of praise singing and so on, and then the results of the vote should be announced in that evening. And then we're going to have cookies. So you'll want to stay for cookies. The concern has been expressed by many of you about those who may need a ride that evening or have some concerns about getting here. The deacons have already got that under control. There will be rides provided for anybody, for any reason. You don't have to admit you're old and don't want to drive at night. It can be for any reason to get here. The Church Office will be kind of handling that. Bill Hager and his group will be handling that also. And so if you are interested in a ride or you know of someone that you're concerned about driving and so on, if you'll just contact the Church Office, then they will organize that and the person that's going to pick you up will get in touch with you and make those arrangements for you. There will be childcare available that evening if you need that also, and we would ask that you would just call the Church Office and make a reservation as we normally do for those kinds of arrangements. There will be several kinds of communications coming to you in the next couple of weeks, so you shouldn't be surprised about those or unexpected of any of those, but please talk with your friends and your loved ones. Remind them that it's very important that they be here for the meeting and that their vote really does matter and really does count. It's important that if you have college students, if you have students that are still on the active membership role, that they are here. If you're a person of younger years and your parents are on the roll, that you encourage them to be here also. Everybody should be at this meeting if at all possible. So please talk with each other, make sure everybody's aware, make sure everybody's got a ride, nobody's left out or uninformed or anything like that. And as always, if you have questions or if there's something that you're confused about, you can contact any of the elders, you can contact the pastors, you can contact the office and the Church Office and somebody will get back to you. So please don't have any questions or concerns that aren't answered. The plan this morning is there are two members from the Administrative Commission here, Tom Laubert and Martin McNeese, and then the members of our negotiating team, Andy Fugit is in charge of that particular group, and they've come to put together a presentation so that you sort of have maybe some answers to some questions before you even ask them. And then if there's questions after that, then we'll open the floor and let you ask anything that you want to. Hold on. He's kind of hard to miss, but it did. This is Andy Fugit. He's a sitting elder and also head of the Negotiating Committee and all around good guy.
I feel like I want to break into song, but I better not do that. Good way to clear the crowd. Good morning and thank you for being here. I've had the privilege, and it was a privilege, it has been a privilege, to be the head of our negotiating committee for the last five or six months. Sometimes it seemed like a bit longer, not too much longer. I consider myself more of a facilitator just to kind of get us going in the right direction, hopefully, to the point where we did reach an agreement, which we have done. The real work of our committee was done by the committee itself, and I'd like for you to, in case you don't know them, see them. Jim Cahallan, stand up please, Jim. Jim Hartzarten, Charlotte Graves, Sarah Timberlake, Barry Davis is around here somewhere. Barry? Alan Wright, and Don Cheats, who's not present. These are the folks that have done the work that we accomplished. There's a lot of talk these days, or has been in the recent elections, about the term transparency. And unfortunately, as we went through the process, we couldn't be as quote-unquote transparent as we would have liked. When we started officially started negotiations with the administrative, the negotiators from the Administrative Commission, we agreed that our negotiations would be confidential until we had an agreement. We reached an agreement in principle in late September, but we didn't have an official agreement, a document that both sides had agreed to until late November. By that time, it was too late as we got into the Christmas season to be able to call the meeting for the vote in three weeks as we were required to give three weeks' notice. We'd have been lucky in having a vote over Christmas holiday. We know how much he would have loved that. So we made the decision to push it off until January. A couple of things that you'll hear several times. January 27th registration starts at 4:00. Voting official meeting starts at 5:00. We need all of you here, you'll hear here and others. There's not enough of you here. 685 is the number we'll need. I don't think we have quite that many. Here's what I'm going to do today. I don't know if my slides are...I'm giving the thumbs up. My slides should be starting. Okay, I'm going to run through questions and answers that I had prepared along with my committee. I doubt that that's going to be all the questions you have. If it is, we can adjourn after my last question and answer in about 15 minutes. However, if there is anyone that has any question about anything that relates to this, anything, now's the time, whether it is of us or the AC, the Administrative Commission folks, now's the time to ask it. We're going to try to answer all those questions before 11:45. We respect your time. We're going to try to be done by 11:45. If it looks like we're going to run longer, we'll stay a few minutes. Otherwise, my plan is to adjourn. If you still have questions, we're going to hang around. The negotiators are going to hang around. We'll answer every question you have until the last one is answered. That's our plan. All right, let's get started. First question, refresh my memory. Why is it that the Session and Church leaders have recommended that we leave PCUSA? This is going to take multiple pages. I'm just going to go ahead and read it so that they know to flip the pages. This question was studied in depth by a committee headed by Jim Cahallan. We started meeting on this issue in November of 2011. That committee met for about two months and came up with several reasons why it should recommend to Session that we leave the denomination. The first reason was that the leadership of the Church believed that PCUSA no longer communicates why and how Jesus Christ matters to the world that needs him. Second reason, your Church leadership believed that many of the PCUSA leadership have rejected the authority of the Bible or have adopted unusual interpretations of it and have not been disciplined by the denomination. Next slide. Again, we've been for two months studying this issue before we made the recommendation to Session, and that recommendation was adopted by the Session in February of last year, and they voted to recommend to you that we seek dismissal. Next slide, please. Well, if we're going to leave, where are we going to go? Why are the pastors and the Church leaders recommending that we move to ECO, a covenant order of evangelical Presbyterians? Next slide, please. The same committee that considered the decision whether to leave or not, considered where we should go. I was on that committee as well, again, headed by Jim Cahallan. We studied virtually every Presbyterian denomination that we could find. ECO had just come on the scene. We studied it in depth along with EPC, Evangelical Presbyterian Church, and ultimately, keep going, we decided that ECO was a better fit for this church. In particular, I'm just going to turn around. ECO has adopted essential tenets that we believe address the concerns that cause us to want to leave PCUSA in the first place. These tenets revolve around the authority of Jesus Christ and the infallibility of the Bible. In addition, ECO has a much smaller, less bureaucratic structure and a missional-centered approach. Again, this recommendation was presented to the Session last spring. The Session voted unanimously that we leave PCUSA to go to ECO. Next slide, please. So why do we have to negotiate the terms of dismissal with the Presbyterian? Well, next slide, please. We are a member, as you know, the Indian Nations Presbyterian, and unlike many Presbyterians, I'm not faulting IMP for this, they are like many other Presbyterians, they do not have a policy for gracious, what's called gracious dismissal. Nothing in writing that says that if a church wants to leave, here's what has to happen for that church to leave. Thus, when the Presbyterian received our request to leave, they had to meet with us to decide the terms of dismissal. In April of 2012, the Presbyterian elected an Administrative Commission, two of whom whose members are here. They met with you. You recall the town hall meetings we had this past summer. And in August of 2012, they determined that they had enough information to start negotiating with my committee. Our committee was formed about the same time. Our first negotiation meeting was in August, on August 14th, 2012. An agreement was reached in principle on September 21st. Unfortunately, it took us two months to get the written agreement resolved. That was on November 30. At that time, the AC informed us, we requested dates in late January, again, given the Christmas holiday, and we settled on the date of January 27th, 2013. Next slide, please. So why do the terms of our dismissal agreement require us to pay $510,000 to the Presbyterian? There are two primary considerations. First of all, First Presbyterian does not own our property outright. We, as members of PCUSA, follow the Constitution of our church, which is contained in the Book of Order. That Book of Order has a clause in it known as the trust clause. All our property, including this building, is held in trust for the use and benefit of the denomination. So if we were going to leave to go to ECO, we couldn't automatically leave and just take our building with us without some compensation having to be paid to the denomination, to the Presbyterian. Secondly, early on in our, at least the FDC negotiators' perspective, we knew that if we left, we were going to leave a hole in the Presbyterian. We'd been providing financial support and other types of support to the Presbyterian for a number of years, and we knew that if we left, we were going to leave a hole in the Presbyterian, which we didn't want. We didn't want to punish them by us leaving. That was not our design. So we looked at terms of what our financial contribution had been to the Presbyterian over the years. We looked at the value of our property that we were going to have to acquire. All these things were considered. Ultimately, the amount that we agreed upon was a negotiated amount with the Presbyterian, something that they were willing to accept and we were willing to pay. We thought it was consistent with the goals that we had in terms of the dismissal, and it's consistent with the amounts paid by other churches, not in Oklahoma, but nationwide, of churches of our size. It was a reasonable amount. Both sides agreed upon it. Why is it necessary that we have 685 affirmative votes for the Administrative Commission to recommend to the Presbyterian that we be allowed to be dismissed? Again, this Presbyterian doesn't have a gracious dismissal policy. The Presbyterians that do, they have what's called a quorum requirement. I left out that first part, and that's a very important part. The decision that you're being asked to make is perhaps the most important decision that a church can make. I thought about this somewhat, maybe short of dismissing a pastor, but the choice to leave the denomination is right up there. Again, this Presbyterian doesn't have a...that sounds bad. I don't mean it to sound bad. They never drafted one, and that's just the way it worked out. No written dismissal policy. In other Presbyterians, typically, if there's going to be a vote for dismissal, their policies would require 40% to 50% of the active membership to be present. Yeah, stay right there until I catch up. I'm looking, seeing confused looks on your face, so probably better if I just read these. In addition, if those 40% or 50% of the active membership are there, then of those that actually vote, typically a supermajority, my turn, a supermajority is required. In other words, 85% of that 40% or 50% would have to vote to leave the denomination. Here, Presbyterian recommended initially that 50% of our active membership, determined as of 2011 to be 1783, or 869 members would have to be present for the congregational meeting, and that 85% of those, or 739, would have to vote in favor of leaving. Again, we negotiated, there were some questions, at least in our mind, about whether our membership numbers were accurate. We reported them, we reported the 1738, but again, there was some issue in our mind about whether they were accurate. Again, the 685 was a number that we negotiated. They agreed to drop any requirement for a quorum, but requested that we have 685 affirmative votes, and we agreed with that. Last question, at least for me. Why does the congregational meeting have to be at 5:00 PM on Sunday, January 27th? Again, the date and time, they asked for our input. We agreed on the date. They had expressed a preference that the meeting be in the evening to accommodate members of the AC who are pastors. We agreed with that. We agree that's a reasonable request. Members of the AC that are serving their churches need to be here, and we agree that they need to be here, so we agreed to set the meeting time to 5:00. What else do you need to know? That's my last question. Motion to adjourn?
Is there any way to vote absentee?
I'll repeat the question back. Question was, is there any way to vote absentee? The answer to that is no. You have to be physically present to vote. And as Amy said, if you have any problems getting here, we'll make sure that you get here for any reason. Now, unfortunately, if you're out of town, we're not paying the flight back from Paris. Other questions? Yes, sir, you in the back. That's you.
Children, I think Martin said, are they on roles?
Yes, sir. One more time, please.
If they're on the roles, if they were on the roles actually as of the end of this year, age is not an issue. If they're considered a member, they're allowed to vote. But I think what's after eighth grade, I believe?
Generally.
Generally after eighth grade. If they're a member of this church and on the roll, they get to vote. Other questions? Got one way in the back. That's a good question. I think my answer to that is it'll be up to the...
Repeat the question.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Wes. Question was, what happens if we don't get the enough requisite number? My opinion, if we got 684, it'll be up to the AC to decide whether or not they see that as sufficient. If we have enough...again, this is just me. I'm not, I don't represent anything that they have said. If it's 600 or some other number, they have the authority to say, we don't accept that. They have the authority to say 684 is not acceptable. That is their authority. We agree that they have that authority. Other questions? Up there, Mr. Lamb.
Are we voting on two separate issues? One's to leave and one's to join ECO, or are they combined in one motion?
Just one motion. Did you hear that question, or whether there are going to be two separate motions or...it's all going to be in one motion.
Do we have any plans for raising the $510,000?
Good question. Somebody get the offering plates out, would you? It's my understanding, Matina around here? There he is. It's my understanding that provisions have already been made substantially for that. Matina's going to take that.
Provisions have been made to make the lump sum payment to the Presbyterian. Agreement stipulates that within 15 business days of our dismissal, that we will present a Presbyterian check for the total amount of $510,000. As part of refinancing that we've been in the process doing, we are taking out a $500,000 loan at a good rate, 3.5% over five years. Our hope is that we will be able to pay that loan off in an expeditious manner and so be able to save significant money on interest. If you just do a penciling out of things, if we have 685 yes votes and every one of those votes committed to paying $80 a month for this year, that would give us more than enough money to cover that $510,000. I realize that there are folks who wouldn't have that capacity, and there are folks who have more than that capacity. So I think that we have the resources by God's grace and the generosity of this congregation to make that happen. In any case, we'll have the money upfront to be able to pay the Presbyterian, and then we'll have to rally our troops to contribute to reimburse the bank for that.
Thank you, Matina. I would say before we go to the next question, at least initially, there was a proposal made to pay a slightly higher amount out over three years in the negotiations. We thought we had the opportunity to pay a lump sum and to be, this to be resolved, and that term, the $510,000 term, was worked out. Great.
Why are college students and military excluded from the vote?
A good question. Why are college students and those in the military unable to vote notwithstanding their circumstances? The answer to that goes back to the Book of Order, I believe, PCUSA Book of Order. You have to be physically present at a meeting regardless of your circumstances. Other questions? Gary.
Andy, is the public later approved to join ECO? Do they have to play our poverty?
The answer to that is no. If we join ECO, the question was, if we join ECO, is our poverty also going to be held in trust? The answer to that is no. No trust clause.
The question is, what happens if we don't get votes? My type of question is, what happens? Do you stay in the invasion or do you start the process?
It's a good question, and I can't answer that question. Again, it's up to the folks at the Presbyterian to decide whether we have a sufficient number here. We have to have 685. That's the bottom line. I'm sorry, let me repeat the question. She asked, again, what happens if we don't have enough folks to vote? Bottom line is, we have to have 685 affirmative votes. If we don't, it's up to them within their discretion. All right.
Will the ladies allow you to use Skype to get us on the vote?
Unfortunately, no. You have to be physically present. Good question. The question was, could we have Skype?
Rachel's question about military and membership schools.
Yes, sir.
Is there a possibility that they can withdraw and change the role so that the number will be reduced?
The question was, if, since you have to be physically present, would it be possible for somebody to have their name taken off the rolls to somehow affect the number we have to vote? A possibility, probably only a very mere possibility. We negotiated a 685 number, and I think that number is, we agreed that was a reasonable number. So even, unless a thousand of you leave in the next two or three weeks, please don't. I think the 685 number is the number we're going to work with. Other questions? Rachel, you're next.
Well, now, we know that we cannot, in the past, if we're not, because they may not be show up, that then we all present a problem.
That's correct. The question was, if we have 685 people here, but only 684 of them vote, then we've got a question.
Sir, did the January 27th vote? What happens if they're snowed out and they're all unemployed?
I don't think we have a specific provision for that. I would, I'm sorry, thank you, Wes. Question was, what happens if we're snowed out on the 27th? I'll leave it to the AC, but I believe that they would be understanding of that. We would come up, you may have to give three more weeks' notice of another date, and I'm talking about like a 2009 model snowstorm where the airports are shut down, people can't travel. I would hope that they, we would throw ourselves at the mercy of the AC at that. Fair enough, Mark?
Yeah, we would.
Mark says they would be considering of our circumstances. Thank you, Mark. Other questions? Pat.
What are the best estimates of what we have in vain to the Indian Nations Presbyterian over the last three years? And what are our best estimates of what we will be paying to ECO?
I can probably answer the first question. I'm not sure about the second question. We studied this question, actually, we went back over, I'm sorry, question was, thank you, my wife laying at me. Question was, how much have we been paying the Presbyterian? He said, over the last three years. We studied it, and what would we expect to be paying ECO going forward? We studied that issue going back 10 years, and I think the number, there was an average, a range, but I think at the low end, it was somewhere in the high 40s that we paid Presbyterian, up to the mid 70s, $70,000, $40,000 a year over the past 10 years. As to ECO, there's a different formula. 1%, which would be what?
Over budget.
Okay, 1% of our budget. I don't know what that number would be.
About $20,000.
I've been told about $20,000 is what we'd, thank you, Rick Roberts, what we'd pay ECO. More questions?
What value does this congregation receive of the Presbyterian and that money that we spend?
Well, personally, I would say that we've reached substantial value. I'll let Matina follow up on that, but we've received substantial value.
Thanks for your question, Glenn, but I think that's the wrong question to ask. I think that's the wrong question to ask. We didn't become a part of the Presbyterian denomination to see what we could get out of it, but because of a commitment to be part of a larger community than just our individual congregation. So, I mean, part of the benefits have been fellowship with a wider range of churches than our own, but I think primarily, we want to think in terms of our commitment to forward the ministry or mission of the larger body of Christ and that this is part of that venture, what we've been giving. So we want to continue, as Andy said, recognizing that our departure will leave a hole in the Presbyterian's budget for a number of years and part of what our lump sum gift will do will be to enable the Presbyterian to move forward without being handicapped in the near future and then to make provisions for the mid-range and long-term future, knowing that we will no longer be a part of Indian Nation Presbyterian.
Thank you, Mateen. Other questions?
Question.
Mr. Adler.
If we came up slightly short, I will give a number, affirmative votes, would this process then start over again?
I can't answer that. I believe... Question was, I learned this time, question, if we came up short, a few votes short, would we have to start all over again? I would expect, again, I would defer to what Mr. McGee says, that it would be either they would tell us yes or no or there'd be some negotiation. We would see where we are. Again, we have to have 685 affirmative votes. George.
Yes, would you give a brief reason? And I understand that a lot of people might be here that haven't heard, ECO over the other option?
Okay, ECO over the other option. Wow, I wasn't expecting to be tested today. Question was ECO versus the other option. I may invite Jim Cahill to come up here just to give me moral support. It really came down to what we said before. We looked at... Really looked more serious than EPC, Evangelical Presbyterian Church. The nearest EPC church that I'm aware of is in Tulsa, Kirk, The Hills is a member of EPC, I think, now a church in Eden as well, Presbyterian Church. We seriously compared ECO versus EPC. The other Presbyterian denominations we considered, they didn't seem to be as good a fit. The primary reasons for preferring ECO over EPC really were two that I recall, and it may have been a third. The first had to do with the ordination of women. EPC has what's called local option in their presbytery for ordaining women and at least at one point in time, there was a Presbyterian that did not allow the ordination of women. Am I correct? Jim, is Jakey said correct. The Presbyterian that we would move in, were we to join EPC, does permit the ordination of women, so it wouldn't be a problem for us. However, the fact that it would be a problem in our new denomination, or might be in our perception, was a problem for us. That was one issue. The second, EPC follows only the Westminster Confession and not the other confessions that are a part of our Book of Order. We have 11 or 13... Am I close? 11 or 13? 11, okay, I remember. 11 confessions in our Book of Order. Those confessions are also in the book, what will be the theology of ECO. We were concerned that having to be constricted and following just that one confession, we... The committee that studied it caused us to lean in favor of ECO. Those are the two primary concerns. Other questions? Yes, Keith.
So if you go along with this, maybe some people, why do we... Why don't we just ignore all this and go independently? Could you explain, Ryan, how to do that?
I can. Question was, and I remember, why can't we just change the name to the Rankin Street Irregulars and call ourselves whatever we want to be? Not that any of you are irregular vitamins. Well, some of you are, but anyway. We are a member presently of a reformed denomination, PCUSA. Again, that trust clause, the trust clause, we could leave, at least in theory, but we would not be able to leave with this property. Again, without, you know, we would be at risk, plus all sorts of other complications. We can't just leave and change our name. I doubt that the Presbyterian would look kindly on us changing our name and say, "Yeah, you guys go ahead and do that. No, you don't have to pay us any money. Do whatever you want." It wouldn't happen.
You mentioned 10 years.
Can you explain the provision?
Yes. Question about remaining in a reformed denomination for 10 years. The Presbyterian requested and we agreed with that request that we would remain in a reformed denomination for 10 years. Reformed as PCUSA agrees is a reformed denomination. ECO has been recognized by PCUSA and IMP. EPC is another reformed... There are literally thousands of reformed denominations worldwide that have been recognized by PCUSA. We said, we... They asked, we agreed, that we will stay in a reformed denomination for 10 years. At the end of that 10 years, we can become the Rankin Street Irregulars. Other questions? I've got a bunch of them. Let's go with you, John.
Is there an ethical plan in place to improve and/or make enough of us to be here at the same time?
Did you say ethical? You're talking to a lawyer. I think there is. Now, the exact details of it, I'm not... Thankfully, it's above my pay grade. Somebody else is involved. Question... I'm sorry, I forgot. Is there a plan to get people here? That's a question. Yes, there is.
We're going to call them? We're going to put flyers on their cars?
Phone calls, flyers. I anticipate the... I'm sorry?
Mailing.
Emails, mailings. I think there's going to be a squad of people going to people's houses to make sure that you, that means you, you, you are all here at 4:00 on the 27th.
Plus those that are not here.
Yeah, plus those that are not here. Yes, David.
You talk about us a lot. I'm just curious, us also includes our pastors?
Yes, sir.
Has anything been done of them or we're sure of their integrity from the Presbyterian that we're involved in right now or what's going to happen there?
Question, thank you Wes. What about our pastors? Are we leaving, our pastors are staying? Mateen will address that.
Let me add two things before I address that. The first is in terms of getting people here, we certainly, staff-wise and elders will do what we can to make sure the word gets out, but the most effective way of getting folks here that aren't here today is by you calling people that you know who are members of the church who haven't been here or aren't here today and impressing upon them the urgency of their being here for the vote on the 27th. The other thing is I just want to make sure that there's not a misunderstanding. The agreement with the Presbyterian is that as far as the Presbyterian is concerned, looking forward, that we will remain in a reformed denomination for 10 years. After that, their claim on us ends. But because of our theology, which we share with the PCUSA, reformed theology, our understanding of what it means to be the church includes the idea that we are not independent, that we belong to the larger body of Christ. So our intention is always to remain connected to the larger body of Christ. We have no intention of sort of tapping our feet for 10 years and saying, "Okay, finally, we can be released and we'll go independent." That's not our intention. So I just want to make sure that's clear. In terms of what's going to happen with the pastors, Dale Dupuis is among us as officially with the Presbyterian, what's called temporary supply. When this church is dismissed from the PCUSA, that relationship through the Presbyterian dissolves as far as the Presbyterian is concerned. Dale's intention is to go back officially into retirement with the PCUSA. So as far as the denomination is concerned, he'll be retired. He'll continue to work in our midst and then he'll make his decision as to whether he's going to switch, ask for his ordination, membership to be transferred from the PCUSA into ECO. With regard to Matt and myself, we're actually in the process of waiting to hear from the Presbyterian Committee on Ministry as to whether they will recommend that we be... that our ordinations be transferred from the PCUSA into ECO or not. If it's not what their intention would be, then is that we would be perceived as having renounced the jurisdiction of the denomination by continuing to work in this church after the church had been dismissed from the PCUSA. If the Presbyterian goes that route and determines that we effectively have renounced the jurisdiction of the church, then our ordinations will be erased from the books of the PCUSA. As far as the PCUSA is concerned, we'll no longer be ordained ministers. And then we would have to apply to ECO, to ask ECO to ordain us within their denomination. Our hope is that the Presbyterian, in a gracious way, will allow us to have our ordination transferred when the church is dismissed into ECO.
Thank you, Mateen. Other questions? Yes, sir.
What does ECO stand for? Another question. Does it only count when you're a member of FPE, right?
Yes, sir. First question is what does ECO stand for? Evangelor Covenant and Order of Presbyterians? Second question is this only applies to people who are members of FPE? Yes, that's correct. Jess.
I see that we all have great concern about how to get this here. Why is it that the AC members cannot get... cannot get 6%? So that this whole job has to be... at this back. It would be much easier for it to become at this back. The standard of church may offer arrangements to get it from their house to the outside. They can get this. Why is that not possible?
The question was why could other rankers not be made to fill the pulpits, et cetera, of members of the AC? That was something that was discussed. We were not able to reach an agreement on that. Again, the date and time of the meeting is something a Presbyterian gets to decide. We agreed on that and that's the... Yes, we would have preferred a different time, but we've agreed to do it at that time. That's when we'll do it. Song is...
Hi. We've got 685 guesses today. We have 635 bodies.
That was for the service. There's probably fewer people here now, including children who, unless they're members, do not. Question was how many are in the room right now? What would you say, 500? 550? You don't look like 685 to me, but... Question. Yes. Henry.
We have one question. We have accounts with scholarship accounts that don't say anything. Please, Frank, we love so... Will you... Would you like to...
Good question, Wes. Thank you, Wes. We have accounts with the Presbyterian, endowments or things of that nature. I'm not... I don't think we ever decided that there were any accounts with the Presbyterian or if there were, there weren't any funds. All of that was taken into consideration. It's my understanding that once the money that we pay, we keep everything that's ours. Other questions? Yes. You already had your one question, Ryan, I'm sorry.
I was trying to comment on a previous question and then it segued into my question.
Okay.
It seems like the two issues we were dealing with originally were the singular worship of Jesus Christ and our Savior and the role of Scripture. And if that requires us to make a special trip up here, it seems to me to be very worth it. In fact, it's not something that we need to make to meet him for us. If that's not a belief of the congregation, half the vote did not.
Secondly, if we're going to make the move, does anyone have the specific language that ECO uses to address the worship of Christ and our saviors and the role of the scriptures in our congregation and our denomination?
You all heard that, didn't you?
Repeat it all, please.
Well, let's see, started with...
No. Yeah, I think Harry Birdwell's going to address that.
I think the minutes of the session meeting will indicate that I made the motion to accept the discussion and decision and agreement that our negotiators had made with the AC as well as to recommend that we put before the congregation the dismissal vote and moving to ECO. We looked carefully at what ECO believes and what the essential tenets of ECO are. I think it is awfully important to all of us on the session that they are spot on with our belief about the inerrancy of the Word of God and the lordship, divinity, and the fact that Jesus is the Christ, the Son of God, the Messiah, all that Mateen included. The King of Kings, the Lord of Lords, he is not just human, he is divine, he is God's Son. And knowing what ECO believes and that that is so strongly rooted in this congregation just parallel, that's the reason we chose ECO.
Thank you, Gary. In addition, the information about ECO is available on the internet and/or at the church office as well. If you have trouble finding a document related to ECO, you can find it in the church office. That's what he said. Question was, Rachel asked, did Harry just say that he believed in the inerrancy of Scripture? Oh, you're right, the ECO. Yes, Jared.
For the members that are not here, is this session being filmed? Is it being recorded?
Yes. That's why Wes is here, to teleprompt me. Other questions? Yes.
Do the new members pass next weekend? Unless you want to...
I don't think so, unfortunately. The question was, would the new members who are allowed, unless we could make arrangements with the Presbyterian, would the new members come in before the vote and be allowed to vote? The answer, that's probably not. But I'm not... That's something we're working on. Yes, Van.
If any provisions made, I think the votes would be scheduled in progress regarding choices made for that Presbyterian mission and voting. Is there a definite amount of work in Presbyterian that they're going to do on? Are they going to have this money and be there for the...
The question was, were there any provisions made in our agreement, our discussions in terms of where the money that we are going to pay might be going? Specifically, he mentioned Urban Mission, Light Mission, Goodwill, what's on there. The answer to that question is no, in terms of, they didn't ask and we didn't agree that we're paying certain monies for the benefit of certain accounts or funds or missions. What the Presbyterian does with the money will be up to the Presbyterian and I can't speak to that. If Tom or Martin wanted to address that question, the question about...
What the administrative commission was told was to settle it and we are going to make, probably make a recommendation to Presbyterian, but it will be up to Presbyterian. make, probably make a recommendation to presbytery, but it will be up to presbytery as to what will be done. It is not up to the Administrative Commission.
The response was, from Martin, sorry to interrupt you.
No, go ahead, then I've got one other.
Okay, the response was that the Administrative Commission may make a recommendation to the presbytery about what is done with the money, but ultimately be up to the presbytery to decide what to do with it. Was that accurate?
Yes, that's correct. You also had a comment a minute ago about new members. If they are members of this church on January 27th, before the vote, and we have a list of them, they will be eligible to vote.
Good news. If you are admitted to this church before 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, we'll worry about that later. Before 5 o'clock on January 27th, you will be allowed to vote.
Assuming I can get the list, I may have to hand deliver the list to Martin, but he'll work with me.
I added that, assuming they went through your normal membership process.
Do we have to do that? We're not, we're not considering doing anything else. Other questions? Other questions? Have a hand in the back there. Yes, sir. Assume you're ill?
I'm sure.
Question was, assume I'm ill, show up and register to vote. I think if you can complete the ballot, even in the midst of your illness, and can leave it, even if you have to go, your vote will be counted.
I just wanted to ask.
Please give us advance warning if you intend to show up ill, though. Yes, ma'am?
There's a lot of chatter going around about the ECO and the, their guidelines or covenant tenets. That was all sent out in communications. Would you just remind people when that was sent out, and where, if it's available, I mean, you said it's available on the internet, is it available for someone who needs it?
Connections website.
Question was, is the information about ECO, which has previously been sent out to you, I believe, and I couldn't tell you the when, it would have happened sometime probably after April last year, and I know you know exactly where it is in that pile of stuff at home, but it's also available on the church website under Connections. All that information is available on the church website, Connections. Thank you, Teresa. Looking around.
10:45.
I hear a motion, your watch is five minutes ahead, orderly, motion to adjourn. Any other requests? Yes, sir, Ham, Pat.
Before closing, I'd like to say, enormous effort is going forth from a wide variety of people. I'd like any of you who wish to join me, give a round of applause.
Thank you.
I'm not watching very well, I may even not get here.
Okay, we're on your time, Bill.
I just want to let you know that all the questions that you've asked there are great questions, and they have been discussed at length. I've been privileged, there are a couple of the committees that have been involved in this. This has been a distraction for this church for many years. It is time for us to move on. Mateen talked this morning about it's not convenient, it's not easy, and it is difficult to be a disciple of Jesus Christ. This is a time where we all need to step forward and be their disciple, make sure that every member that you know of, whether they attend regularly or not, are here on the 27th at 4 o'clock to register. We don't want to have 685 people here. I would rather have 1,739 people here, but I know that's not going to happen, because two of my kids who are members don't live anywhere near here. If we had 1,200 people here, and 1,150 of them vote yes, I think that would tell the presbytery, yes, this congregation wants to move on and move forward. And yes, we are, and we have decided to follow Jesus Christ. Amen.
Are there any thoughts about the prayer times where we might meet and pray about?
Question about whether it'll be prayer times to meet in advance.
There will be a 24-hour prayer vigil, the 24 hours before the vote. Did you hear that, Sissy?
I'll repeat, there'll be a 24-hour prayer vigil the day before the vote. I would imagine there'll be others, other times established for those of you that want to come here and vote, or come here to pray, or pray at home for what happens on the 27th.
And we'll start praying around the church again, week before, in the morning.
Marine said that there'll be people praying around the church in the morning. What time? 8 o'clock, for those of you that are available, 8 o'clock in the morning to pray. Other questions? Yes, ma'am?
It said on the slideshow that they have adopted unorthodox practices, maybe you should care to elaborate on what happens?
The question is, our leaders have believed that some individuals in PCUSA have adopted unorthodox beliefs in terms of the worship of Jesus Christ, or the authority of Scripture. I'm not the, I told you I was going to break into song. I really don't want to, I want to answer your question, I don't want to open up a huge can of worms. Let's put it this way, there have been, Mateen would tell you, for 30 years, disagreements in the denomination. You're going to hear stories of pastors that have been ordained who refuse to acknowledge that Jesus is the Son of God in PCUSA, allegedly, perhaps that happened. There's been dissension in the church, obviously, for the last years, over the ordination of gays and lesbians, other issues of that type, to the point where your church leadership concluded that the denomination was broken beyond repair. And if you want to talk more about that, I will talk to you more about it later. Yes?
We need reidentification on the day.
I don't believe, well, we know who you are. Question, question? Question was, do we need reidentification? As long as you can be, probably not a bad idea, your name is going to be on a roll sheet, and as long as whoever, AC will be manning the sheets, and we'll be present as well, to say, yes, that is Georgia Fury. It's not an imposter.
At what point in progress do you receive that?
During the meeting, you'll receive a ballot. Question was, when do you actually get your ballot? You can register in advance, 4 o'clock. These details haven't yet been worked out, although I've told the AC has a meeting tomorrow to do that, and then we'll communicate that to you, as far as the specifics of the meeting. Other questions? Other questions? Going once, going twice. Yes, sir, Carol.
And you anticipate more things happening at that meeting, other than just a few minutes to take the votes?
Again, the question was, do we know, well, there are more things that happen in the meeting, I don't really know. Again, the AC is going to meet tomorrow or shortly to come up with an agenda. Once we know what that agenda is, we'll communicate that to everybody. Questions? Bill Burger.
I'm going to adjourn.
Okay. Before we do, we motion to adjourn, although he's out of order since we're not really in a formal meeting. We've wanted to tell him that for years. What we, I had asked the session members to do is to be prepared to stand at this time, since we're, I would say this, if any of you have questions, didn't want to ask, or didn't think to ask, or just thought of, come forward after the meeting, we'd be glad to talk to you. I don't see the other questions at this point in time. At this point in time, I like to ask the session to stand. The active members of the session. The session members that are present. This group of your leaders is unified, and it's desire that we move forward. And I thank each of them for their support for my committee. Mateen, would you close us, please?
Let's pray together. Lord, you are the head of the church. We all acknowledge that. We yearn to walk faithfully before you. We believe that by your Spirit, you have called us to make this move. We trust that you will see us through in this effort. We pray, as we have, Lord, you know, for years and years, that you will cause the PCUSA to prosper as it turns fully to your lordship. We pray that you will be exalted in our midst as a congregation. Thank you, Lord, that in the midst of difficult decisions and the toughness of personal relationships being constrained, that you remain the God of love, who cares for us, and nurtures us, and heals our wounds. We pray that your hand of blessing will guide the church universally, and we may be faithful as we carry forward the Word of Life to those who don't yet know you. Thank you for this time, and for the good discussion, questions and answers. May your name be glorified, and all that transpires, we pray, Lord Jesus. Amen.